What are you looking for? Oh, no. One more minute, guys, sorry. Seems to drag on when you really want it to just be there.
Sense of time, right? Loud.
The world's largest angry bee.
This is season for motorcycles.
All right, it's finally 7:30, and I will call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Lynn, will you do roll call, please?
Madam Mayor, Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Vice Mayor Darrell Garner. Councilmember Derek Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Brutus Seelaw.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to the approval of the agenda. Councilwoman Lumen.
I move to approve the August 5, 2025, city council agenda as presented.
Director.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the August 5, 2025, city council agenda as presented. Any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open.
Derek Elliott, yea.
Online voting has closed, and motion passes with six yae's.
Okay, moving down to the approval of the consent agenda. Councilmember Sanger?
I move to approve the consent agenda of August 5, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda of August 5, 2025, as presented. Any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open.
Derek Elliott, yea.
Online voting has closed, and motion passes with six yae's.
All right, moving down to citizens' participation. This is a time for public comments set by Resolution Number 2C, 1996, and sets a time limit for public comment of five minutes, with the provision that five-minute time limit may be increased at the request of a member of the public or a council member. Do we have anybody that would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? And will you please state your name and write it down for Lynn?
She can probably write it better than I can. Jim Shear, I'm here to make a comment for the Shooting Advisory Board. I don't know how many of you know, but we had a major event at the shooting range this past weekend. It was a Glock match. It's the third year that I believe that it's been held, and this year, there was a record number of entrants for this match. It was a very good time. I think everyone enjoyed it. We had people from as far away as Kentucky and Arkansas come to this match. And I would especially like to thank the local Pepsi distributor for bringing us some needed water and soda that they provided at no charge to us. And I understand they do a lot of this type of stuff. They've done a lot for the shooting range. And I also would like to thank Wesley for stepping up and becoming the match director on short notice. He did a great job. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sanger has a question for you, or a comment.
Do you know how many people were there?
I do not have an exact number. I believe there was 170 approximately entries.
Wow, great job. Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak during public comment on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to board appointments and presentations. The first one's an appointment for the Shooting Range Advisory Board. Do I hear a motion? Councilwoman Lumen.
Move to appoint Wesley M. Harrison to the Shooting Range Advisory Board for an unexpired term ending June 30, 2026.
Director.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to appoint Wesley M. Harrison to the Shooting Range Advisory Board for an unexpired term ending June 30, 2026. And is Wesley here? Would you like to make a few comments on why you'd like to be on our board? Thank you.
Well, as you heard, I am the match director for the Glock match we had, and that's something I'd like to keep doing. And I use facilities a lot, so I figured being a part of things would benefit for everybody.
Great. Thank you so much for applying, Wesley.
Yep.
All right, any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Derek Elliott, yea.
Online voting is open.
Aye.
Derek Elliott, yea.
Online voting has closed, and motion passes with six yae's.
Okay, moving down to reports and information. DDA, Main Street, and Hub reports. And I'll invite Pam up to tell us what's going on.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. May I approach?
Yes, please.
Good evening. So first off, I kind of want to give you some updates. It's just kind of, I always have big reports. I'm like, trying to keep it small tonight, but it didn't happen. First thing, I want to talk about the light poles. Working with the contractor, now that we have a little longer days and longer drive time. So we should have all the light poles reprogrammed and everything good in the next 30 days. I think we've finally got a handle on the electric, on the poles. It was just a combination, I think, the last time Councilman Elliott asked. It was a combination of not just the contractor, it was electric in the poles. It was just a lot of moving parts. So wanted to update you on that. New businesses, I think some of you guys were able, if you were down at Summer Shenanigans on Friday night or at the Wyoming Business Alliance listening session, we have a new business that's officially coming into town. We're hoping to be open on the 27th. They hope to be open on the 27th of September. That'll be their grand opening. Would like to have you guys put that on your calendar. It's also a big event happening in town. But they will be open before that, but we'll do the ribbon cutting on Saturday, September 27. So that is Great Divide Outdoors, and Mimi's at The Blake, so it'll actually be boutique for women and then an outdoor store. So that's check. Another possible business I'm working with is, he's going to try, he has a business in Sheridan, and he's going to do a pop-up store for maybe the next six months through, and it's educational toys, and he has a store in Sheridan. So he's, we've been talking pretty heavily for the last two weeks. So, and then there's one other one, and hopefully I have that information next month. So a lot of activity, so super exciting. You have Cowboy Fest on the Divide, aka Art Beach, coming up, and that is September 26, 27, and 28. This is, Art Beat is an event that we always have the first weekend in October. The junior and high school rodeo have asked us to move it a week ahead of time and in conjunction with them. And so we are going to have, Art Beat is normal, so if you know any artists, we'd love, it's on the website. So if you have no artists, we're going to have a concert, a quilt show, hoping to get a couple sheep wagons in, maybe a brand show. But we have three people performing on Friday night, the 26th, down at the depot. We'll have two local people. The second local person has a fiance who plays for Pam Tillis out of Nashville, so she's coming to play with her fiance. And then we have an artist who is, was the Female Rocky Mountain CMA of the Year like two years ago. She'll be our headliner on Friday night, 26th. And then the 27th with Christie and Dawn Hall opening their store. They have a band that played for their wedding from Georgia, who's out of Nashville, and they have agreed to come play for us on the 27th. So, totally cool. So wanted to get those, those big dates on your calendar. And again, if you know any artisans, just go to downtownrawlins.org or anybody who's listening to this. We already have the artisan application on the website. It's like, whew, check. So I always say this, it takes a village. And so this summer, we tried something new. It's, was called Summer Shenanigans. Went over about 3,500 people that came on those three nights. And you guys win, and I wish Darrell was here because he appreciates this so much, late night setting up a movie after dark and everything. But he looks at me, he's like, are we doing this? I'm like, we're doing this. And then you have this little kid walk by in their pajamas with a pillow, with a blankie, saying, "We're going to watch a movie on that big screen." It totally makes you go aw. So sponsors, Discover Carbon County, Rawlins Music Academy, Blackwater Sanitation, Quickloop, Sondergaard, Bigfoot, City Rawlins, The Movies, Stems and Steve, Outlaw Sound, Rawlins in Motion, Williams, Volunteers. We have the whole board, plus Wives, Mara, Steve, Holly Hopkins, Heidi Larson brought her daughter from Saratoga, Katie Smith, Charlie Smith, Myra Miller, Janita Colton, Damian, Stephanie, and Sammy Sesko, Stephanie Hinkle, Darby and Scott Thayer, Darrell Garner, Brittany Gale, and then all the businesses, Red Desert Arts, Serendipity, T-Tech, Plant Haven, LA Looks, Dynamic Designs, Marquee, Showguns, Bucks, Stems and Steam, Riflemen, Domino's. And partners, Carbon County Child Development, Rawlins Baseball, Rawlins Music Academy, Kid Preneurs. We had 10 Kid Preneurs in that depot, and boy, could they sell. And one missed it on July 11, and he begged me to show, set up on Friday night, even though it wasn't Kid Preneur, Remington Mathill. We let him set up, and he sold suckers again. He sold suckers the first time when he was 12 years old. Now he's a senior in high school, and he came back to sell suckers again.
He's a junior.
Oh, he's a junior?
Yeah.
Okay. How cool is that?
Give him one more year of it.
Yeah. And then Rawlins Wrestling. So many partners, so many downtown businesses. It just really does take a village. We do have, super exciting, I've talked about this at the last, we have our feasibility, as you can see, I've marked it all up and everything. We did receive the feasibility study on the Ferguson, and like to schedule with you guys on your calendar for a work session in September and October to talk about the Ferguson. And then the last thing, and I'd be remiss because this really is important to us, is the sheet I also handed you guys out. Is, it's kind of misleading when we just put numbers on a piece of paper, but I really wanted you guys to see that on our operating budget, we're so thankful for you guys' support. But that is the operating. And then there's always the activities, the events, the big projects. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that your money is so important for the operating side. But the events and all the projects, we're talking $6 million-plus dollars of grants and funding on top of, but we couldn't be able to write those grants or do those things. So $6 million that we have done. And again, the DDA was created by the council, by you guys, to perform duties that you guys ask. And so I always say that Rawlins DDA serves, or oversees a lot of additional tasks. You know, we take care of cleanup in the downtown, infrastructure times with grants. So I'm not going to read, but I just wanted you guys to see that. But bottom line is, everything Rawlins DDA does is for the benefit of the city because we were created for that reason. So again, you know, of course, we do assist in some businesses, but a lot of that's through grants, but the main funding. So I did want you guys to see that, you know, it's not just the sick, it's not just, it's very important, but there's so much more. You know, that's the operating budget, then there's the event budget, then there's the project budget. And sometimes that gets off when we do those smaller, little one-pagers. So any questions? I just gave you a lot of information.
I don't, thanks, Pam.
Good, thank you.
All right, moving down to city manager and staff reports. Manager Sarvi is not here tonight, but I know that Alan and Cody both have a report for us. So I'll let Alan Chief Robinson come up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Just a little bit of an update for you. We have received specs, basically, for lack of any better to call it, on the new fire engine, those kind of things. I'm in the process of reviewing those, make sure we got all the little whistles and bells for lack of any better to call it the way we want it. You know, there's just a lot of little weird things that we have to change, that kind of stuff. So after I get that reviewed, then we'll go to the next step, which will be a formal bid, paperwork, those kinds of things. And so I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that we are in the process, and that is moving forward. With the timeframe that it takes to get the truck here, we want to get it coming as soon as we can because it is down the road, it's time we get it here. So with that, that is all I had to report, so. Any questions?
Any questions? Thanks, Chief. All right, Cody, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Just wanted to do a quick update on a couple of projects and then water. We're doing our final walkthrough with Dorset for our SCADA program tomorrow to finalize everything with them. There'll be some training that's going on with staff throughout the next few weeks and some minor IT details to work out, but the project is wrapped up as of tomorrow. Also tomorrow, we're going to do the mandatory pre-bid meeting for Edinburgh with our contractors. So we'll be holding that at Public Works, and hopefully we get a good turnout on contractors. From what I've seen, we should have a few showing up and very interested. Water levels, we're still producing about a million a day out of the pretreatment. We've got our tank levels back up. I think the highest side is about 80%. We're about 60% on the low side. Before pretreatment, we were struggling with about half that on both of them. And everything is running very well as of right now. And that's just my report for staff, or council.
I love your report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good news, it's great. All right, any other city staff that wanted to report? Okay, city attorney, Mayberry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Very short update, a contractor that is working with Wyoming DEQ, they are called Air Resource Specialists. They are out of Fort Collins, for short, ARS. They have been in contact with my office regarding a potential placement of a temporary mobile environmental monitoring station in Rawlins. All collected data is visible on the state DEQ website, and ARS has identified a location immediately behind the rec center. It's actually immediately to the west, so outside of the back doors, completely unintrusive with any walking traffic or any of the other amenities with the rec center. The mobile station consists of an enclosed trailer, so kind of like a little cargo trailer. It has various sensors and air quality monitoring equipment up on the top. Trailer is locked and secured, and ARS indicates that, in their experience, additional fencing or perimeter security is usually unnecessary, although they're open to other safety measures if the city would require them, if the city proceeds with this proposal. So in exchange for permission to use this site, ARS is proposing to pay the city $150 per month for about a year, might be extended to another six months. Power would be supplied from a nearby power box that is immediately behind the rec center. They would pay for all the utilities on their own. And so I've been circulating this proposal to department heads to see if they have any feedback or input or, you know, any objections, questions, concerns, et cetera. Like to propose this to council as well. It's a pretty simple project, and with council's consent, it'll, I would then take the next step to work with them to develop a formalized agreement on, basically just a licensing agreement. The distinction of a licensing agreement versus a lease is they have no interest in the property. They just kind of have permission to set up shop. And if, and it is equally terminable by either party. We don't want them there, they don't want to be there anymore, and it's simple enough to terminate.
Okay.
Any questions?
Councilmember Sanger?
What do they do?
Air quality monitoring, they are a contractor for the state. So they're actually a fairly interesting company. They do several places with national parks. They've been doing some things with the state of Colorado. I also, you know, looked up their information. In Fort Collins, over by, I think by Forest too, they have some benches, and they have the air quality monitoring things for them. And it's a joint project with the city of Fort Collins. But this would be for the state DEQ as they're monitoring different levels around the state.
They didn't start this morning, did they?
No, they shouldn't be there at all.
Right, because the smoke this morning was. Just want to know if they caught that.
That's true, yeah.
Any further questions? Woman, woman?
Did they set the price or the city?
That was their proposal, their proposal. And this was before vetting anything. I haven't gotten a whole lot of feedback from anybody else yet to respond, but that was their initial offer.
I think it's a viable option for us to look into.
Well, I will be back with council and after I've gotten a few more details with them and giving an update.
Sounds great. And that was all of your report?
I have no other updates.
All right, moving down to city council updates. Does anybody have anything? Councilmember Elliott?
My password changed, so I'm not able to get it on my computer. But a couple of things that are on the top of my head is, somebody, well, there's been a couple of people who have said that they put applications into the city, and they haven't received responses back. Where do those applications go to? And then what's the turnaround time for them to get a response back?
Madam Mayor and Counsel? So when they apply, they go through a software. It's called iSolve. That actually goes to the HR department, and Tara looks at that, and then she filters them. If they're applying for like the police department, it goes to the police department. If they're applying for streets, it goes to the department head. So it goes to each of the department heads and things like that. So it depends on where the department head might fall, how busy they might be. They might not be able to see their emails, maybe for a day or something like that. But they usually go through and they filter out everything and get in touch with the ones. But when you submit to iSolve, you also get an automatic reply back stating that the city has received your email, your application for the position that you are applying. So if they have not, then they might have done something on their end that they have not received. But iSolve, this is software, it's a third-party software, and they automatically send out a reply. So if they have not had a reply back from the city, then they need to maybe look at what they have done. Maybe they haven't submitted everything correctly on their end, but they do get confirmation from the city, so.
If they're not selected as, to go into an interview, is there a reply back to them, sent back to them, explaining why they were not selected for an interview, do you know?
Madam Mayor and Counsel, I am not 100% sure. I know that would be more so with the senior leadership, each of the department heads, what they do on a case-by-case situation, feel like that, so.
The second thing I have is, I put a, so I got a complaint from, from a citizen in Rawlins, and I put the complaint on the city website, but I hadn't received a reply back yet. But I think I might have done it on the weekend.
That should not, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, that did come in and come through my office, and I did double-check with the company because I couldn't see that it had responded, and they verified with me that they saw it go out. However, you did put in your personal email address?
Right.
So if you did not get that back, please double-check because I double-checked with the company.
It could have went to my junk email also.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll check it, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Councilwoman Lumen?
I just want to thank Cody and Stevie for the wonderful trip to see our water system and the great employees that we have working at the water treatment plant. We truly are blessed to have such hard-working people working for us. And I just want to thank them for their patience helping us climb under fences and scare away cows and the numerous things. But just want to thank them for their patience with us, and it was truly a good learning experience. Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson?
I don't really know how to address this, but I had an acquaintance, Lex Kans, and he went down to the recycling center. Even though there was people down in there, the people that were working said they couldn't do anything because the guy that takes care of it had left. And no, he's not going to keep going down there time after time and find out there's nobody there. So I was just wondering, are all those people that work in the recycling center able to do all the jobs?
I'd have to look into that, but if it's about handing out money, there is certain people that cannot do that part-time help, cannot hand out any money for aluminum collection.
Well, my only concern is we have a start time in the morning, and we have quitting time in the afternoon. We should have somebody there that can handle people coming in during those hours. And they said he wasn't there, wasn't even on site.
I'd have to look into it. Usually, we jump people back and forth from the landfill to cover certain positions because certain positions, like I said, they can't. If it has something to do with aluminum cans and handing out money, there's only certain people down there that we would allow to do that. And with being short-staffed in the landfill, trying to fill that up, and we've had a couple of sick people out recently, I'll have to look into it, but that's not something that happens on a regular basis. Absolutely not, so.
And I just had a couple of comments. I wanted to thank the police for hosting National Night Out again. It was, we had a great hamburger, a great time.
It was, we had a great hamburger, um, a great time down there tonight. Um, and then Steve and I were talking earlier tonight and, um, we discussed setting up some kind of retreat so we can discuss our goals before we go into budget session. And so I'm going to send you guys out a couple of dates and we'll get those on the books. Okay? All right. Moving down to, we have no unfinished business, so moving down to new business. And the first thing we have is an approval of a 24-hour catering permit. Councilmember Singer?
I move to approve a 24-hour catering permit for Christie's Inc. Doing Business As Michael's Big City Bar and Grill, liquor license number 91, to cater the 2025 Sinclair Summer Art and Music Festival event at the Washington Park, town of Sinclair, Wyoming, on Saturday, August 16th, 2025. This event starts at 8:00 AM.
Second. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve a 24-hour catering permit for Christie's Inc. Doing Business As Michael's Big City Bar and Grill, liquor license number 91, to cater the 2025 Sinclair Summer Art and Musical Festival, um, at Washington Park. Do we have any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open.
Derek Elliott, yea.
Online voting has closed and must pass this with six yea's.
Okay, moving down to another catering permit for the Rifleman. Councilmember Singer?
I move to approve a 24-hour catering permit for the Rifleman Club Bar LLC, Doing Business As Rifleman Club Bar, liquor license number 59, to cater the 2025 Sinclair Summer Art and Music Festival event at Washington Park, town of Sinclair, Wyoming, on Saturday, August 16th, 2025. This event starts at 8:00 AM.
Sergeant.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve a 24-hour catering permit for Rifleman Bar LLC, Doing Bu- Business As Rifleman Club Bar, liquor license number 59, to cater the 2025 Sinclair Summer Art and Musical event at Washington Park. Any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open.
Derek Elliott, yea.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yea's.
Okay, moving down to approval of the ancillary and nonprofit funding allocations and disburtsments. Councilwoman Lumen?
Move to approve ancillary and nonprofit funding dispersments for July 1st, 2025 through July 30th, 2026.
Sergeant.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the ancillary and nonprofit funding dispersments for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. And I believe Attorney Mayberry would like to comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Um, so I have actually, you know, uh, provided a lot of information here. The city has allocated funding for 13 nonprofit and ancillary agencies through the FYI 26 annual budget totaling $325,663. It's broken down into the 13, uh, respective agencies. In the past, the funding was intended to be derived from sales tax revenues. The amounts distributed to each agency have also historically been made on a quarterly basis, which includes reporting requirements and compliance with the service terms for participation in cleanup and adopt-a-street programs. The quarterly payments were intended to take into consideration fluctuations in sales tax revenues, in which case distributed quarterly amounts could decrease or increase if sales tracks, uh, tax revenues fluctuated. However, in recent years, the funds have been allocated from the general fund without a direct tie-in to sales tax receipts or a formal calculation method. Allocations have been based, most recently, on prior-year funding levels rather than on performance of revenue trends. It is therefore recommended that for the, uh, fiscal year 26 allocations, that those proceed based on the approved budgeted amounts without adjustment for sales tax fluctuations. And payments can either be made in a lump sum or quarterly installments or some other manner as determined by council. So the way these, uh, um, in order to be compliant with the Wyoming constitution, we have to have some kind of a public service benefit. And as a result of that, that's why we have these contracts that have some kind of a public service component, which is the adopt-a-streets, the, um, cleanup component, those sort of things. So the, um, nonprofit and ancillary funding has historically been extended only to agencies that have participated in the past. And opportunities to apply have not traditionally been open to other agencies. They've kind of been on a historical, uh, basis. The Carbon County Library System did submit a request, I'm not sure if it was a, um, a letter, I have, was not provided a copy and I'm sorry, Tom is not here to speak to that, um, but had submitted, um, interest in being considered for funding for the 26, um, for fiscal year 26. Counsel, um, must therefore consider whether the library system is included in this process, are they, um, excluded, um, because they're not part of the historical process and the allocations have already made, or some other type of arrangement. So that I have already prepared a draft service agreement and that, I've simplified it this year from previous amount, um, from previous agreements. And this allows us to use the same agreement for all of the agencies. It has the same components for the adopt-a-street, for cleanup. And if there are other potential, um, efforts that the city would like to see organizations involved with, those are possible and we can fill in the blank and add these. Um, if we scroll down a little bit more, there are, this, um, this has the, the general provisions and signature line and then on to the final page, which is the scope of work. And this is where, depending on the type of organization and what they can do, is where it's kind of, you know, check the box, fill in the blank. It's really simplified it and streamlined it to be able to standardize the process. So right now, in, in regard to the way the funding allocations are divided, there are some questions that we have that have come up in regard to what really should be funded, what is part of the allocations. So, um, the city did allocate some specific amounts to the different agencies, specifically, um, and those are set forth, um, up at the very top of the, of the note. So, uh, 18,000 to the senior services, 8,100 to child development, 7,200 to Project Reach, 13,500 to Cove, 9,000 to Boys and Girls Club, 22,500 to Stepping Stones, 9,000 to High Country Behavioral Health, 4,950 to Children's Advocacy Project, 9,000 to Pet Partners, 13,500 to the Carbon County Economic Development Corporation. The Old Penn Joint Powers Board was allocated $18,000. However, in the past, they have also been allocated, um, irrigation water for the Old Penn grounds. And to clarify, they have two water lines. They have irrigation lines and they also have service lines that, um, that include sewer and all those types of things. So this is strictly the irrigation lines. The past year, um, for the Old Penn, um, I have an attachment here. It is, um, water and municipal, um, utilities to ancillary agencies. So on this, thank you, the, um, Old Penn in-kind services equaled about $12,000, over $12,000 for the use of irrig- uh, for water irrigation. This was at no cost to the Old Penn. And we calculated this based on what a, what anybody else would have paid for the type of line that they have and the amount of water that they used. The previous agreements did not have any cap or limit or any kind of measure on how much water would be allocated. The question that is directed to council is, out of the $18,000 for the Old Penn, does that include the water? Is it in addition? Is it going to be included this year? Is there a cap? And what other considerations, if any, would council like to make for the Old Penn? There's a similar situation with DDA and if you can, um, scroll upwards a little bit. DDA for the, um, does receive, uh, city utility services for the Rainbow Teton Building, uh, which is, you know, based on their, their water line, their usage, um, they also get sewer, landfill and recycling at no charge. And the total for their services was a little over $2,000. So again, same question as to whether, uh, these in-kind services are included in that allocation. Um, this was unclear to staff how this should be calculated. Additionally, it was unclear if, um, how they were allocated because there are also budgetary and reporting requirements and how they are recorded within the city's books. So then also is, of my questions were the funding to, potentially to include the library system. In the future, should the funding be open to other organizations? And if so, do we need to develop an application and selection process? Should additional cleanup and beautification projects be required to the funded recipients? And in that respect, uh, staff did consider a couple of other projects that could be considered, that would be not, uh, fairly simple to carry out, but do provide a beautification component. And most specifically, that was at the cemetery. There are some flower boxes that could be spruced up, um, could be a beautification project. And I'll actually let Myra speak to this as she has a little more information than I do to be able to comment.
In speaking with city staff, um, we identified this as a beautification project that would be relatively simple for city staff to manage. You know, it's not asking a hundred people to show up and paint picnic benches and you have to get, you know, all this materials there. This is something we could say, this is your assigned space, you know, please pant at using some, you know, basic things about what deer will eat or not. They are in very poor shape. I can't remember a time that these have been actually taken care of. There's some bushes growing in some of them. But I know when I spoke to Cody, he thought this would be a great way to really make a big impact on those boxes. Um, they're right as you go into the cemetery, um, on these four roads. Um, there is four on each of those and they're about nine feet by two feet, so they're, they're not small.
Okay, um, council, we'll start with you, Councilmember Singer.
So we are moving to approve ancillary and nonprofit funding dispersment. We've already made the decision, we're paying these people. We are not making new decisions. All of these questions should have been presented before budget, every single one. Presenting them now is completely out of the ordinary. This is something that should have been covered prior to budgeting. So the, so these questions could be answered. They can't now because we've already budgeted for them.
Councilwoman Lumen?
Absolutely agree. Like you said, this is just to approve what we've already approved in the budget to give them the money on the same contract that they've had in the past. That's what we expected when we approved that budget. Now, for me, if we want to discuss these items, it would be before the next budget is, is passed. You brought up some great points, but for this, it's, it's too late. Many of these, um, nonprofits are waiting for this money in order to match it with grants, in order to meet deadlines. And us holding it in order to discuss and answer these questions will put them in a great bind. I don't want to do that for this year. I'd like to see us just pass, um, what we have here, the amounts that we agreed in our budget to pay them. And then, um, when we start discussing budget for next year, we can go over some of these, uh, vital questions, which I, I feel do have a, a point as far as who you give them to and how we give them, um, and all the points that you just made.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Uh, Attorney Mayberry?
Staff does request clarification for the in-kind, uh, the water and the services. Those were not specifically allocated within the budget allocations for, for the fiscal year. Therefore, should they be excluded from this coming year?
Councilwoman Lumen?
Are they things we did last year?
They are, but they were not included in the budget allocations.
So if it wasn't included in the budget allocations, how was it taken out of the budget? Had to have been put somewhere.
Unfortunately, I, I can't speak to that.
So my thought is we do the same we did last year, however, whatever line that was.
Any further? Okay. Um, so are you, do you think, Attorney Mayberry, that we need to make, um, a friendly amendment to this motion to include the in-kind? Or should, what would be your recommendation?
My recommendation is that that is at council's pleasure to make a, a friendly amendment if so desired, to include the in-kind donations. However, there have been several concerns raised about the volume of water, especially considering the current water situation.
Does anybody have any comments on that? Councilmember Elliott?
I believe a few. I don't believe it should be, uh, included in the in-kind. I think that what the dollar amounts are is what the dollar amounts are and they should pay for water, sewer and recycling, in my own opinion.
Councilmember Singer?
We're working off of historic, that's what we're working off of. So if we've done this in the past, changing their allotment after we've already agreed to the old forms and these dollar amounts is unfair to them.
Councilmember Elliott?
Nobody knows if it was included or it wasn't, that's the question.
That they do know.
I know the, the, the Penn has been operating this way since 2006.
So there's a lot of history that says this is what we've been doing. Now, is that the best idea? Those are great questions.
Those would be good questions.
But we've already made a decision on the budget. You want to amend the budget? Because that's what you're requiring?
No, not to amend the budget.
You would have to.
What we did with the budget is we allotted the money to them. Anything above that, they should pay for.
It's in-kind.
Like I said, I wouldn't put it in-kind.
We already did that. We accepted the old contract and we gave them their money when we approved the budget.
Is that correct?
No, the old, uh, contract was not previously approved for this coming allocation.
So we're working under no contracts.
There was, every contract is approved when the donations are actually granted.
And we've agreed to grant them.
Have agreed to grant a dollar amount.
And everything that's attached to that.
The budget included a dollar amount. That's where I'm asking for the clarification.
I would, as we, as Councilman Hart, uh, Lumen has already said, this is what we have historically done. We should do that and then come back in next year's budget and ask all of these questions. I agree with that.
Councilwoman Lumen?
So when we approved the budget, we assumed these amounts, we assumed the in-kind because it's always been, and we assumed the old contracts. So my question is, when did the council ask for this to be looked into and for a new contract to be developed?
Every year it's a new contract. This was streamlining an old contract that had a bunch of extraneous, unnecessary terms that related to federal funding grants that were historical. And so this streamlined that contract to remove those unnecessary terms and clauses, left the necessary material clauses regarding the services, what is expected in return, maintained the original agreements regarding the cleanup and adopt-a-street.
Councilmember Singer?
Honorable Mayor, that wasn't the question. The question was when? The question was, when did the city council request this?
City council has not requested it, nor has it been approved.
My thoughts are, we maintain status quo, but this could be something that we could definitely dive into further when we get into the work, workshop, whatever we are planning to put together before the budget, because I think this is all good information and good questions to ask. We have a lot of work coming up in our new budget cycle that I think we're going to have to look further into a lot of different things, but that's where I stand. Any other discussion? Okay. Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
What are we looking for? Can I have those there?
Yeah, just to prove the dispo-
Go ahead and pay it like we asked.
Yeah, to, to send the money, yep.
Online voting is open.
Derek Elliott, yes.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas.
Okay, moving down to an ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code, section 2.04.010, governing city council meetings. Councilmember Sanger?
I move to approve the first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code, section 2.04.010, governing city council meetings.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code, section 2.04.010, governing city council meetings. And, so I, I brought this one forth last week. We had a discussion on changing the meeting times. In the proposed thing that Ms. Mayberry has put together, it does have a blank spot for the time, so if we so choose, we need to add a time in there at some point to reflect that. What we've, some of the things we've thrown around is having the meeting at 6:00 or 6:30 and then having our workshop to follow, or having workshop on a different night altogether, alternating. So we aren't here until 12:00, midnight, 1 o'clock, and our staff don't have to be here as late. And so, that's what I've been proposing, and Ms. Mayberry put together a nice ordinance. So, I'd love to hear your discussion. Councilmember Sanger?
So, the proposed, Honorable Mayor, the, the proposed start time is?
That was blank, so we would have to add that into our motion.
Tag your it. What, what time would you like to start?
I personally would like 6:00 or 6:30.
Okay.
What, what is everybody else's thoughts on that?
Councilmember Elliott?
I would like 6:00.
Okay. Councilwoman Lumen?
Um, 6:00.
I'm no earlier than 7:00.
Okay. Councilmember-
No earlier than 7:00?
Yeah. Councilmember Patterson?
I agree with the 7:00.
Okay.
I, I don't particularly care. It doesn't matter to me. You start whatever time you want to start.
Okay, so, we need the motion to be amended to reflect a time.
Well, two of us are 6:00 and two of us are 7:00, 6:30?
So, just as a discussion, what is the plan if we move that early in the day? What is the plan going to be on our thick and deal meetings? Are we going to have them every, every Tuesday? So one meeting, one Tuesday, we have council meeting, next Tuesday, we have our workshops. So we have four meetings a month, split in two?
Or we can have our workshops to follow. So the nights that we don't have a workshop, we're out of here much earlier.
I think you're going to find we're going to have a lot of workshops. The workshops, no, but I think the workshops is going to go. We got a lot of them lined up already.
Yes, but if we have it to follow, we'll be out of here earlier no matter what.
So.
Because there are some times we sit in a workshop at 6:00 and we're done by 6:45, and then we sit around for 45 minutes waiting for the meeting to start. So that's 45 minutes we could be doing other things at home. So, my, my concept is to have the workshop after the meeting. That would be my preference, but I'm open to hearing your guys' suggestions. Councilmember Patterson?
With, with the way you put that, I, I would agree. I don't, I'm not really fond of having too many meetings for us, but we were to do the meeting at 6:00 and then turn around if we have a workshop, then go right after that. I don't think I would have too much heartache with that. We're not going to get out of here any earlier if we do that, but at least the, the residents of Rollins, if they want to come to a meeting, will still have time to get here.
Councilmember Sanger?
So, I think the benefit here is if you start at 6:00 and then you go to the workshop and the workshop's 20 minutes long and you're done.
Yes.
You go home. You're not waiting until the actual start of the meeting. I think there's a benefit to that right there, but as I said, it doesn't matter to me.
About the people, we're complaining about the means going too late for the people to have to stay here for. What about the people who want to go to the workshops? There's a lot of people go to the workshops.
But if it's only 15 minutes, then they're done. They're not waiting through the end of a workshop and then into our meeting to stay for a meeting. I think it just shortens up that space that you would normally have a space in.
Whatever you guys decide.
I, I don't care, but.
I have had a lot of people that don't want to come to our meetings because it is 7:30 at night, and, you know, a lot of us are probably in our pajamas by 7:30. I don't know about, this is not my typical to, you know, well, it is for the last six years, but normally on a Tuesday night, I'm in, in my pajamas by 7:30, especially in the winter. Okay.
Councilmember Elliott?
I'm good with the earlier time and work session following.
So let's just, we'll make regular meetings shall begin at 6:00 PM and that all workshops will follow directly after.
Who was the second on that, Lynn?
We didn't have a time, so I'm, I'm putting a time.
Yes, yep.
Councilwoman Lumen was-
Okay.
Agree.
Okay.
So you'd like to do a friendly amendment?
Yes, please.
Move to approve the first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code, section 2.04.010, governing city council meetings to start at 6:00 PM. Is that how you would like it to read with work sessions to follow after? Is that correct? Is that how you all?
Yes, yes.
Work sessions as needed.
As needed. Work, work sessions as needed, yes.
As needed?
Okay. Counsel, or, sorry. Attorney Mayberry?
Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel, the way that we, I have drafted this was that works, the prior ordinance, call them workshops.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, verbiage.
I am happy to change it to say work session. Also, it is set forth as workshops and/or informational sessions may be conducted immediately following the adjournment of the regular meeting or as otherwise scheduled or noticed. Would you like it specifically to stay only after, or leave it, leave that flexibility?
I like that flexibility. How about you?
No, that's fine. The way that reads is really good, actually.
And then in terms of workshop versus work session?
No matter.
Verbiage.
We can use, you're the language you have, we can use that in the amendment.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we would like to have workshop?
And or session.
Thank you, Attorney Mayberry. You're welcome.
Workshop, is that what?
Yes.
Councilmember Sanger?
Yeah, because it says in this one, workshops or informational session. That's what it says. So if it reads that, that's good.
So all you need is just the time?
6:00 PM. Is that what you're looking?
And then everything else is to follow.
And just for clarification, we'll have three readings to perfect it if we don't like it.
Few more readings, yes.
And I want to thank Attorney Mayberry for putting this together.
Yes.
Oh, we probably need to refresh.
Refresh, yes.
Yes.
Derek Elliott, yes.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas.
All right, moving down to a discussion item, and this one was supposed to be Vice Mayor Darryl Garner, but he had an emergency, so we will try to fumble through this as much as we can. He really would like to see us consider organizing a Fourth of July parade and Christmas parades every year. So traditionally, the Christmas parade was put on by the Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce disbanded. And so last year, like, our wonderful, wonderful city staff had to put together the Christmas parade very quickly, and they did, did so amazingly. But I just wanted to open this up for discussion, and Pam, looks like she has something to say about it, so we'll invite her up to talk.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I just wanted to throw this in the discussion. It's kind of ironic that last Friday during summer shenanigans, I did have a nonprofit and business, they do both, interested in starting to take over the Christmas parade. So, I just wanted to throw that out, that that's a great option.
Yeah.
So, in the discussion, I wanted to let you know that it's Rollins Proud and then it's Rollins in Motion. It's Becca Acabetta.
Are they, any interest in the Fourth of July parade as well?
Didn't know anything about the Fourth of July parade, because they're always over in Saratoga, but she's definitely ready and already thinking of themes.
Yes.
So I just wanted to share that with the council, that there's someone interested. Not sure if city staff was going to do it, wasn't sure if we were going to do it, so she said, "We would like to do it." And she does do the Easter egg.
Yes, yes.
Hunt of your yard, and she has some other projects that she does, the Halloween pumpkin.
Yes.
So this would be like her third thing. So I just wanted to share that with council.
Great.
Thank you.
And this is a discussion, go ahead, Councilmember Sanger.
So, the Fourth of July parade, or, do we normally do one?
No.
The city doesn't do it?
We haven't traditionally done one.
Isn't, there's a, a large one, isn't there?
In Saratoga.
In Saratoga, on that day? I don't know if you're going to get the coverage you need. You're not going to have enough bodies to do that, because that is a trick that a lot of people take.
It is.
They go there for that day and do that event, and I don't know if you're going to gain the traction that you want, and that's an expense the city would have to incur, close streets that the city has to do in order to facilitate that. And then, and then you may not get the attendance that you're looking for, so it's a large expense.
Attorney Mayberry?
There had been some discussion about this in the past regarding the Fourth of July because it is a city holiday, so that is a day staff has off, so that would require bringing staff back in on what has already been declared to be a city holiday.
Right.
That's interesting.
Then we have the air parade due three weeks later.
And we have home.
Don't come, I'll live, so, I mean.
It's, it's not that I'm opposed to, you know, doing something on the Fourth of July, but when, when, when I am Huckleberries, we weren't even open, because there was nobody in town, there was no one here.
Nope.
So we didn't even open on that day.
It's October, that was happened.
So, right.
Councilmember Elliott?
I believe people are going to Saratoga because there's nothing here in Rollins, and we're the, the county seat, and it was, it was, it didn't look good that other smaller communities in our county were having large displays and parades, but Rollins had nothing. It, it, it just didn't look right or feel right.
Well, this is definitely a discussion item, and so, I mean, I don't think there's any actionable thing to do with it. Just wanted to get everybody's opinion on it. I do think that, this is my personal opinion, we, because Christmas is closer than I want it to be, I would love to see city staff work in conjunction with our nonprofits to put on the Christmas parade. I think it was very successful last year when they pulled it together really quickly, and I think it would be wonderful if we could work with nonprofits to help facilitate that. So, that's just my personal opinion. All right. Any further discussion on that? All right, let's go down to an executive session. Do I hear a motion? Councilwoman Lumen?
I move to enter into executive session at 8:32 PM for Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A92 and 3, to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice, or dismissal of a public officer, professional person, or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person, or officer, unless the employee, professional person, or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, any or all other witnesses in the matter being investigated. Following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session on matters concerning litigation to which the governing body is a party, or proposed litigation to which the governing body may be a party.
Got you.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to go into executive session at 8:32 PM? Yes. Any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open.
Derek Elliott, yay.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas. Let's start with Attorney Mayberry. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I have it. Yes. Thank you. You're good at that.
Am I, so you're at home? Yes. Where at? Sure. Yeah. I don't know who else was there, but you and I. We were at the same table. It was, um, it's, it's, I'll turn around, I'll ask. And if not, I will. Is that working? I can show you too. Well, I'll be fair, let me text you. 3:00, and then we'll just figure out where I'm going. Yeah. Yeah, let's do that, that's fine. Nice. Yeah, that's awesome. Well, I just think it worked out better than, versus you guys starting and doing all these things. Okay, let's just, just do it. They have fun. Yeah, I heard they did. They had a little, I heard a couple things on the Colonel Gates, but otherwise it was nothing crazy. Nothing crazy. Hey.
Thanks, Myra.
Thanks, Myla. And... We were just being forced to do it, we were relaxed, um, we were, we were threatened. Anyway, so, um, it is, so, um, we didn't try to do it, um, and I just, um, you know, I didn't, I didn't do it for the people. We, um, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't. So, there's a question, I'm answering, I'm answering. So, I learned, I learned for you. I'm just getting by, too, but I turned this one around. Yeah, it's okay. I'm gonna get it back, I'm gonna get it back. So, there's, and then we, I won't be, I'm thinking now that I'm going to, I'm going to. Oh, my gosh, I was so...
Okay, so, um, we're gonna have
I, I talked about it.
The tripod, so, because Yeah, so if you wanna just come back tomorrow or something and work through it. We, but, okay, because if you're gonna have the tripod, we'll have to come back, we'll have to do it tomorrow, so not right now.
Alright, well, you just follow the wireless.
Well, maybe you could just place it so it's not on the wall when paint?
Well, I'm, I'm looking for your advice there, because what would I do? I don't care. I can stick it with the double-sided tape or a little wad of chewing gum or whatever is appropriate to not mess up your stuff.
And we're still live on the air, just so you know.
Alright, hello, everybody.
I'm wondering if your phone signal isn't as strong as your recorder was like when we practiced it, if that's the issue, or if it's just the location.
There's just so many variables, I have no idea until I
So you have two of those?
Yeah, there are two.
I would say probably my guess would maybe could put one on this shelf, and then one on this shelf. And then they would be
I have two of them.
They go three sixty-five. They're not directional?
Uh, no, they're, it should be about a hundred and eighty degrees, maybe a thirty-eight pattern.
Like that?
That oughta work if it's okay with you, and then
Well, I prefer that over
Then we can stick it over there somewhere.
And then your phone would still be able to hear broadcasting, right?
Yeah, 'cause of the receiver, uh, that connects to the phone.
Oh, so maybe we could put, so this, the issue was, Panino wouldn't be able to see, right, it's, I think we had kinda shoved it back here when we practiced.
Yeah.
But we could either put it on this also, you know, we could just set
Well, it's gonna be an experiment one way or the other, but I, I have no idea.
We could, we could try for eight times. But if the, if the phone isn't the microphone, as the microphones are, we could just place the phone itself up here, right, with the dongle?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it doesn't need a dongle, it just
Or whatever that thing is.
Yeah, it'll just plug into the phone and we put the phone wherever it's convenient.
Put this
Yeah, this is the receiver, wherever, wherever that can be put is
Can we just put it right here by the, 'cause there's usually not anything on this table during the meetings.
Yeah.
Just watch that cord.
Yeah, we can put the phone there, and put the second transmitter right up there too.
And that'll make it actually less intrusive for like tripping, potentially.
Well, we want out of everybody, and this is not, it's not supposed to be here.
We just gotta practice.
It's invisible.
No, nothing's quite invisible. So do you wanna try that next time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, uh, set up a moment for you sometime and, uh, before that, so we can just go ahead and, and do it before.
Yeah, we have our next meeting, so, yeah, whenever's good for you, just text or call me and set it up, or do you wanna go set it up now?
No, no, I don't, now, now is not a good time.
Oh, I mean, like, do you wanna go set a time now? I can go look at my calendar.
I've got something going on, uh, Thursday and Friday, and then I've got, uh, one o'clock program on PAN at one o'clock on Mondays. And other than that, I have no idea what's going on, that's just all Mr. Union.
Okay, um, I'll look at my calendar and let you know.
Alright, let me get my junk in, get out of here.
Yeah, can I, you can take that down if you want, you don't have to walk out with it.
No, I'm gonna sit down there.
Okay, I mean, I can help you.
Oh, uh, okay. My friends are friends, right?
I mean, I'm not doing anything, we're just waiting for council to come up.
Well, I'm not talking out of school, and I don't want to tell anybody on our radio or on our internet.
Okay, just you know.
Uh, just FYI, that's I'll have some adroit of confidence later, not today. But that'll be radio, it's not, uh, internet.
This just holds down the traditional wire.
Yeah, the friends come off.
This is nicer than the one I have, mine is
Beautiful, it's the same thing.
Oh, it's not as high-key.
I know, it's not
Walmart, Walmart clearance.
Yeah, well, this is an answer.
Hey, there you go. Okay.
Wasn't it so handy?
Well, I try.
Yeah, I gotta talk to Jenny all these days, but
Oh!
It's always difficult to find her when she's not up to her years and one act and do your other.
That's true, even for me, and I'm, you know, I'm her daughter, people are always like, "What's your mother?" She's like, "I don't know." "She's a busy lady, how are you busy, Lee?" But we have dinner together once a week, so
Oh, yeah, you gotta keep up that ambition.
Yes, it is very, very nice, very lucky.
The next major action that I have for the next year is, uh, trying to find out why people think I'm a little jerk.
Well, people think all kinds of things.
I know, that's, I hate to say that, I hate this, I don't wanna say it, but I gotta say it, because I hate it, I hate that term.
No, don't say, oh, you, when people say that, you're not saying it.
No, I'm not, no, I love, I love it.
I think it was like, yes.
I have some issues, but then I've got an attitude regardless.
Well, we're all our own humans, we all have the right to have opinions.
Well, and that's important, we're all the same, who would care about that?
Oh, boring, well, y'all care about the same things, and the other things when they say this, it'd be way more boring.
There you go.
You mean I have to carry this?
No, you got it, you got it, and I've got a system of words for me, so
Good, it's not your first review.
You can't be around for over eight years and not go to the review.
Well, it is range reviews.
Won't you go there?
Bye, thank you, sir. Yeah, the doors are locked.
... Yeah, it wasn't long. That is not. But. But. Good. And. Oh. Yeah. And. So. And. Okay. 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 Um. Um. Okay. Okay. The light thing just just just.
The back.
Yeah, that's the front. Yeah, not if you go.
Thank you.
I think we're all. I think we're there. Okay. 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 Um. No. Okay. Okay. Um. Um. Okay. 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 And then we we we. We're very quiet. It's it's. Oh, I see. It was a commercial. I see. It's a commercial. Yeah, I see. So. We look at all people. All of them. So. Now. But we're. Maybe. Yeah. The. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Um. See. Okay. So. It's. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. The. Yeah, the. Of course. Of course. Of course.
... Yes. 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 Yeah. I can do that. I will be there. Yeah. I will be there. So. Yeah. So. So. I'm gonna try. I will try. Do. We will try. If we. We should do. So. Be sure. We should push. So. 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 We will try. So. Push. Push. So. 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 If. I just. I will try. So. 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 The last one. That's. So. We will try. We will try. So. So. It's. It's. So. 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 Sure. I will try. We will try. Yeah. So. 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 Yeah. So. 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 I will try. We will try. We will try. I will try. I will try. We will try. We will try. I will try. Yeah. So. But it's more clear. We will try. So. 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 It's just. So. 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 We will try. I will try. Which is very exciting. But. Actually, it's. Sure. So. 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 I will try. Yeah. So. 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 Yeah. So. So. It is. We. Have. My. Yeah. My. It is. Just. Yeah. So. Yeah. It's. More. My. There's. Also. So. There's. There's some. Right. There's. There's. So. There's. So. You. So. So. Do you have any worries right now with the different things? Like if you mean the. The short ones or the long ones? Do you have. Or do you. I'm sure. You said. Yeah. Sure. It's. Sure. Sure. So. I'm. 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 Sure. I'm. 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 It's. Sure. I'm. Sure. Yeah. This. Yeah. That is. Yeah. It's. So. 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 It. So. 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 It's. It's. True. Yeah. Yeah. So. 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 True. But it's. It's. And. So. So. She's. To find. She's. I guess. Yeah. So. It's not. True. So. I. Just. Just. Make. Of. So. So. Yeah.
We can work on the computer afterwards.
Yeah.
So it said that my password expired, so I created a new password to log in. And then it brought me to a poor time and it said.
My password.
So I took the old one and then I put the new one.
I just rest.
Tomorrow.
Couple of days? I think it was just a long lasting cram. I'm not complaining. I see holiday and nice day. Oh, it's miserable.
Yeah.
Final. Well, and it's all executive session. You can't really vote.
Yeah. I'll have to abstain and she's got to write that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to come out? Oh, sorry, Tanya.
No, go ahead.
Do I have a motion to come out of the executive session?
Let me get back there real quick.
Sorry.
Here we go.
Councilmember Patterson.
I make motion to move, move to come out of executive session per amendment statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five eight nine two and three at ten twelve P M.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to come out of executive session at ten twelve P M. Any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open.
Derek Elliott, yea.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six days.
Okay, do I have an approval of the executive session minutes? Do I have a motion? Councilmember Patterson.
Move to approve the executive session minutes of July fifteenth twenty twenty-five, regular city council meeting as presented or amended.
Sergeant.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of July fifteenth twenty twenty-five, regular city council meeting as presented. Any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open.
Derek Elliott, yea.
Okay, moving down to a claim. Oh, sorry, Lynn. I'm ahead of the game.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six days.
Okay, Councilmember Singer.
I move to approve and pay claim G L two five seven three zero nine as presented.
Second. All right, the motion's been made and seconded to approve pay claim G L two five seven three oh nine as presented. Any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open.
Derek Elliott, yea.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six days.
Okay, Councilmember Singer.
I move to appoint Pam Thayer as acting city manager on an interim basis effective immediately with authority to perform routine administrative duties and carry out the direction of the city council until such time as the city manager is able to retune, return, or the council appoints a replacement. Major policy decisions, hiring, or termination of department heads shall be reserved to the governing body. Terms of the interim manager role will be defined more precisely by Tuesday, August twelfth, interim. Interim manager will assign as necessary city staff as support to the D D A.
Second. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve Pam Thayer as the interim city manager until at verbiage, such time. Um, any discussion? Lynn, when you're ready, you want to do a voice vote.
Madam Mayor, Jethlyn Ross?
Yay.
Councilmember Bruce Seawall?
Yay.
Councilmember Tony Alman?
Yay.
Councilmember Derek Elliott?
Yay.
Councilmember Terry Patterson?
Yay.
Councilmember Steve Sanger?
Yes.
Did you vote? Or did you announce it? I was waiting on you this time.
The motion, um, the motion passed. All in favor. Oh, yay.
All right. Was there anything that was discussed in executive session? Um, or did it say we have any objections to anything discussed that in the executive session?
That's what I was hoping.
Okay. Seeing none, um, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at ten sixteen P M. Uh, we will have our next regular council meeting on August nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Lynn, I'll have to get with you about a special meeting.